Good.
Maxine, are you ready?
Maxine?
Yes.
Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Township of Aberdeen zoning board of adjustment.
Well, we can't hear you. We're having the same problem we usually have.
Again, I've turned up. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Wow. All right, let me try this again. Welcome, everybody, to the Township of Aberdeen zoning board of adjustment public meeting via Zoom. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which is in
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, bear with me. I'm gonna try to speak as close to the microphone as I can. In compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting was sent to the appropriate newspapers on September 16, 2020. Maxine, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brenner?
Here.
Mr. Bucko?
Here.
Mr. Bayok?
Here.
Mr. Falcone?
Here.
Mrs. Friedman? Mr. Phillips? Mr. Phelps?
Here.
Mr. Sinclair?
Here.
Maxine, should we go ahead and start with the continued business and?
Sure. Um, I don't know that. I think these are just on here for the, well, Travacino has been carried to the November 4, 2020, meeting without further notice. So if anyone is on this call regarding the Travacino application, that's B 19-110, 102 Willow Avenue, Block 137, Lot 1. If you're on the call for that application, that is being carried to the November 4, 2020, meeting at 6:30 PM. There will be no further notice. And then we have the Agostino application. And Maxine, was that previously carried to October 28 already?
Yes.
All right. So no one would be here for that tonight. That's just for our information that the, that the Agostino application, 49 Atlantic Avenue, is being heard on October 28. Which then, Mr. Chairman, brings us to the application of this evening.
Okay. Um, I want to call to order for new business, B 20-107, Miko Developers LLC, 79 Monica Street.
Mr. Chairman, good evening. Board members, professional staff, attorney James Clarkin of the firm of Clarkin and Viola for the applicant.
All right, Mr. Clarkin, before you start, I'm just gonna mark in the exhibits I have. I have Exhibit A1 is the zoning development application. Exhibit A2 is the variance plan dated July 8, 2020, consisting of two sheets. Exhibit A3 are the architectural plans dated March 16, 2020, also consisting of two sheets. And those are the only exhibits that I have that have been pre-marked. Is there anything else that you want marked?
The answer is yes. I had sent letters to each of the two adjoining property owners. I had previously sent them to Maxine electronically, and I would request that they be admitted into the record as Exhibits A4 and A5.
I'm with that. Okay, A4 and A5, the letters to neighbors, letters to neighbors. And you've not received any response to those letters?
I can represent to the board that I have received no communication from either property owner.
Okay. All right. So the only other exhibit I have is Exhibit B1, as in Board 1, which would be the CME review letter dated August 28, 2020. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would turn the application over to Mr. Parkin.
This is an application to construct a single-family dwelling on an undersized lot. By way of background, back in 2012, this board granted an identical application seeking exactly the same relief as we are seeking this evening. That relief is as follows. Lot area, 6,000 square feet required, 4,324 square feet existing and proposed. Lot depth, 90 feet required, 72 feet existing and proposed. Side yard setback where 8 feet is required and 6 feet is proposed. Maximum building coverage, 25% is permitted and 26.6% is proposed. Since 2012, there has been no change in the zoning for this property. That's an important point, and that is why we believe that the reasons that you utilized to grant the application in 2012 are still valid today. The reason we're back before you tonight is because the resolution you adopted in 2012 contained a condition that the approval would only be good for one year. The house was not constructed. Your prior approval included a number of conditions, and the applicant is agreeable to complying with those same conditions. The most important of those conditions is granting a 5-foot right-of-way easement to the township along Monica Street and entering into a developers' agreement. We are in receipt of the CME review letter that you referenced, and we will address each of the engineering items individually. We have two witnesses this evening. The first is Steve Parker. He's our engineer, and he prepared the plans. He will outline the applicant's proposal and then take you through the CME report. He will be followed by Jim Higgins, who's a licensed professional planner, who will justify the variances that we are requesting. Mr. Higgins provided testimony at the 2012 hearing, and he'll repeat that testimony this evening. In 2012, you found his testimony persuasive, and in your resolution, you indicated that you agreed with his conclusions. We will not call the-
Mr. Parkin, can I just interrupt for one second?
Sure.
Who was the applicant in 2012?
The applicant was a different entity. It was Real Estate Development Group of NJ LLC.
All right, I'm just trying to call up the resolution for myself. I don't have it in front of me, and I just, I want to get it. What was the name?
I'm not gonna reference it.
Real Estate Development Group?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just gonna print that out on my side. I mean, obviously, the board, I don't, the board does not have that resolution. But why don't we mark that in as Exhibit B2, just so we have it for the record?
Okay.
Okay? And you're stipulating that you're going to agree to all the conditions within that, within that resolution? Is there anything you're not agreeing to?
No.
So it's basically, is this basically the exact same application that that was before this board in 2012?
Exactly the same relief.
All right. Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I am not going to reference in detail the prior resolution. I just wanted this board to be aware that the identical application had been approved and that the basis for justifying the variances through Mr. Higgins' testimony was found by the prior board to be persuasive, and his conclusions were accepted. We will not call the architect. We have submitted elevations and floor plans, and you have marked them as Exhibit A3. We think that the proposed dwelling is modest in size. It has a width of 48 feet and a depth of 24 feet. The structure will have two stories, three bedrooms, and a one-car attached garage. As I previously noted, we did send letters to each of each joining property owners. That is my opening statement. Mr. Chairman, if you or any of the board members have any questions, I'll field them now. Otherwise, I'll call my first witness. Go ahead.
I think Harvey has a question.
Are any of the principles of Miko the same principles of the prior applicant?
No.
Thank you.
Can't hear you.
That was it. I asked one question. I said, thank you.
I suggest, just so the board understands, and I'm gonna get the resolution to be front of me in a second. If I'm understanding everything correctly, the only reason the applicant's even here tonight is because there's a condition in the 2012 approval that if they didn't act upon it within one year, the approval was null and void. They never took any extensions of that approval. And that's really the only reason that they are here tonight. And the reason we put into a resolution that condition is because circumstances do change over time. Board memberships change. Philosophies might change as to where the town's going. So, and 2012 and 2020 is obviously an eight-year difference. But, but absent that condition being in the resolution, they would not be here tonight. So I just want, just for the board to understand that. All right, Mr. Clarkin, go ahead. Who's gonna be your fir-, Mr. Higgins is gonna be your first witness?
No, we'll call Steve Parker, the engineer, first.
Okay. Mr. Parker, do you swearing testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self, be God?
Yes, I do.
All right. And you are a licensed engineer, state of New Jersey?
Yes, since 1991.
Okay, that's great. We will accept you as an expert unless the board has any objections. And Mr. Parkin, go ahead.
No objection, Mr. Lexton, but my typical question. Mr. Parker, other than the fee for your appearance here this evening, do you have any financial interest in said property?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
All right, Steve, did you prepare the engineering drawings which we filed with this application?
Yes, I did.
Are you familiar with the site and have you visited it?
Yes.
Can you briefly describe for the board how the property lays out today?
Yeah, this is an existing undeveloped property. There is not, there's no structures on it right now. It's been, it's been cleared in the past. So it's, it's, you know, there's no trees or wooded areas on it. It's fairly level. The site slopes from the back to the front. There's about a 3-foot elevation change from the back to the front. And it's, Monica Street is a, it was existing road. It's in a, it's in a, it's in a developed area. There are some lots around it that are undeveloped, but the one across the street and adjacent behind are developed, either with single-family homes or in the rear with condominiums, in that case. This property itself is small. It's 60 feet wide. It's about 72 feet deep. And what we're proposing is a two-story house on the lot that's 20, basically 24 by 48. It'll have a single-car garage and a 10-foot-wide driveway. Basically, you're gonna be, you know, placed right in the middle of the property. There, there are public improvements. By that, I mean, there's public sewer and water in Monica Street, but not directly in front of the property. There are two, this, in a southerly direction on Monica Street. So as part of the application, what we're proposing is to extend the sewer and the water line to the property so that it can service the, the new house on the, on the lot.
Your plans also provide for a 5-foot widening easement to the township?
Yeah, that's correct. Right across the front, the front of the property, that, there's nothing proposed there, but that's in the event that the township ever in the future wants to provide or propose any improvements, they, they'll be allowed to do that.
Are there any stormwater management measures that need to be taken?
No, there's really none, none of the required, and there's none proposed.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity to review the CME Associates Engineering Report dated August 28 of this year?
Yes, I have.
All right, I'd like to start with the engineering items that begin on page 2. Item 2.1, could you address the concern that the engineer has put forward?
Yeah, that's, the comment is about the, the proposed sanitary sewer extension. The indication that there's not enough cover on top of that line. There's gonna be a little over a foot of cover on top of the line. But, but that's why, I think, was approved in the past, and what we're proposing now is a ductile iron pipe. It's not your standard PVC plastic pipe that's gonna be extended up to the manhole. It's gonna be, what we're proposing is ductile iron pipe, which can withstand, you know, heavy truck traffic, even under, with shallow burial depth. So that's why that's been proposed, and we're proposing to just continue that, that, that part of the application.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Items 2.2 through 2.10, the applicant is willing to comply with each of those items. I was not gonna go through them individually unless you would like me to. Can't hear you, Larry.
Yeah, Jim, I don't think you need to unless, unless the, unless the board really needs you to. I mean, we can accept that you're going to comply with all, 2.1 through 2.10?
That's correct.
Well, 2.2 through 2.10, I think, the 2.1 is just a comment about the depth of the, of the sewer line. So I'm not sure there's any to comply with there.
Why don't we ask the board engineer if he's accepting the offer for the ductile pipe?
I am not.
Okay.
And one of the reasons is we've, we've had problems in the past, the township's had problems in the past with DIP pipe for sanitary between the the fumes and the eroding of the pipe, the pipeline walls. So what, if they can maintain the cover of a foot using a PVC, we would have no objection. But if they can't, then they're gonna have a problem.
So the cover needs to be at least 12 inches, right?
From top of pipe, you need at least 12, you need at least 12 inches.
Steve, can we do that?
I believe we can, yes.
Okay. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a 12-inch, what was it?
Cover.
12-inch cover?
Yeah, Mr. Parker, what, I, I think we had a conversation previous, right, about maybe a possible ejector pump?
That's right. I mean, I think, you know, that's another option. We, what we could, we did, I did speak about that with, with the engineer. And one of the things we can do is we can propose an ejector pump on this property that's privately owned. It's just for the exclusive use of this home. And what it would be is, it would, there would be a force main that just gets extended from this property to the manhole, the existing manhole in Monica Street. There would be no sewer extension proposed, but we would just connect by a force main and an ejector pump. So that's another option as well. We could, I think either one of those would be fine.
Well, the way we can leave it is, we'll accommodate the 12-inch cover, and if we cannot, then we will go with the alternative.
And is it going to be the, the SDR 35 PVC pipe?
Well, that's, we're gonna, we have to either demonstrate to the engineer that we can do it with that pipe, or if we cannot, then we'll have to propose the, the force main connection with an ejector pump.
Anthony, is that, because your letter just says you want the sanitary main Shelby.
I do. And one of the reasons why, so, Parker, for, just for clarity purposes, if you were gonna do the ejector, are you still gonna, would you maintain at least a 36-inch depth? Extend the sanitary main up and then have the ejector as your lateral, basically, from the house to the connection point?
Well, we could, what we could do is we could extend the sewer to a point where there's always at least a foot of cover on top of it. Because if we can, I mean, if we can extend, if we can extend that and maintain a foot of cover, then we don't need to the ejector pump. Correct?
Anthony, I can leave this, you know, that, that they must satisfy you as to Point 2.1. If you, if you, if you're comfortable with that, that they must prove, that they must leave that to your satisfaction, and then we can move on from this. Because one way or the other, they're obviously gonna need a sanitary sewer main, and, and it's gotta meet your approval. So I'll do that if you're okay.
I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence about the 12, I mean, the 12-inch cover satisfies for the pipe. But then you have the idea of a freeze thaw. You're both, you're above the frost line. You know, the property owner may have issues going forward if they have something shallow. So my, my hope was that they could maintain a little bit deeper of a main, at least to the, to the frost line. And then at that point, if they needed to, they could have the ejector pump lateral come out into the main that they're extending.
Yeah, so why don't, why don't we just leave this offline? Do you, if the board approves this application, why don't we just leave that to you to, to work out from an engineering perspective?
That's fine.
Okay, because it's not really, it's not really a zoning issue. It's more of a building issue. So, okay, so I'll leave that subject to engineers' approval.
All right, then, moving on to page 3. Item 3.1. This is the only item in the report that we're not agreeable to. We are proposing that we will pave a 4-foot-wide patch in order to repair the road after the water and sewer lines are extended.
So that's another one, Mark, where within the last, like, three years, the township has been pretty consistent in terms of asking utility companies or developers that if they have more than one trench on the roadway, at a minimum, it would be a half width from center line to edge of pavement. If they all fall within that one side of the road, if they don't, then they've been usually requesting a full width. Now, I don't know. It looks like the water in the sanitary could probably fall within the same side of the center line of the road. And if that's the case, then at a minimum, I would ask the board to encourage the developer to at least pave a minimum of a half width from their property to the PC of the intersection.
I know, Anthony, I know this is not the first time that that comment has been in a review letter on your behalf. It's not like it's unique to this application. And, you know, I mean, if you feel, you feel comfortable, if it's only half, what'd you say, half paved?
A half, a half width from center line.
A half width, I'm sorry.
That, that, that would be the minimum, assuming all the trenches fall within that side. And one of the reasons it's been coming up is because the township, quite frankly, has been dealing with the residents afterwards, even with New Jersey American, with their own utility company on this side of town for the water, and quite frankly, for the sanitary also. So our office, quite frankly, has been getting beat up because we're allowing the utility companies to trench. So what would they have done with New Jersey Natural Gas? And a lot of the other utility companies is, they essentially require that they pave at least a minimum of a half width. So I, I'd ask for the full width, depending on where the trenches fell, but if they can keep them within the one-half side of the road, then a half width would be a minimum requirement that I would probably ask the, the board to enforce.
Mr. Clarkin?
My opinion on that is I don't believe that there's the necessary nexus between the impact of this application and the need to pave from edge of pavement to edge of pavement, or even half width. If we, if we can repair the road, I think that we have satisfied what our obligation is.
So you're absolutely refusing to do a half width?
My client indicates he is not agreeable to the half width.
I, I, I would just ask the, the board to keep in mind, then, that if you look at the plan with the water and the sewer, by the time you dig a trench for the water, a trench for the sewer, you're not gonna have half a road left.
For-
I, I have a question. Well, I have a question.
Go ahead, Tom.
Are these trenches, are they, are gonna be dug perpendicular to the front of the house or parallel with the road?
Steve?
Yeah, those are, they're parallel with the road. They're gonna be extended from, you know, from the existing utilities that are shown on the plan. So they're, they normally, they saw cut the pavement, and then they dig the trenches, and it'll be parallel with the road.
How many, how many of your feet are we talking?
About, well, the sewer is about, an extension of about 72 feet. The water line will be a little bit more than that, probably somewhere around 120 feet or so. I'm just, I'm just kind of, let me scale. I'll tell you this in a second. So no, it's more than that. It's about 180. The water line's about 180-foot extension, because it's, that's getting extended to the, to the far end of the property.
And both trenches, it'll be two separate trenches or one big wide trench?
Two separate trenches.
Okay. And you're saying over 100 feet, then? 170-some feet, the other one's 100?
Actually, no, I'm sorry. It was, it's 72 feet on the sanitary sewer, and I used the wrong scale. It's 120 feet for the water line.
So the applicant is, from what I'm getting, the applicant's just proposing to backfill, tamp, and then just put asphalt where the, where the, I guess, where the road was cut for this?
Yes.
And Anthony, because that's significant. I can understand 100-and-some feet, and you wanna pay half the road instead of just filling it in. I'm gonna go with whatever Anthony's, the, the engineer, that's, that's my opinion.
Anthony, I have a question for you. Anthony, is this more or less an undue burden on the township?
Well, I, I think, based upon two different trenches in the roadway, coming from a road that was recently paved, I, I think it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an undue hardship for the public works if that road starts to fail because of two trenches and such proximity to each other. So my, my answer is yes.
Well, and looking at the, the site plan, the proposed sanitary sewer runs right down the middle of the roadway, unless my eyes are deceiving me. And between that and the property line is where the proposed water line would be. And so at worst, I, I'm sorry, at best, half the roadbed is gonna be disturbed, and probably more than that, given the fact that the manhole cover, the proposed manhole is larger than the main itself and will extend beyond the midpoint of the roadway. So I concur. I think it's mandatory, especially given the fact that the street, I think, is under five years old in terms of its pavement. Right, Anthony?
No, Monica Street, I think, is, is over five years old.
Okay.
Mr. Brenner, but I, I, although I, you know, I do take your point, actually, now that I'm looking at it with the existing sanitary sewer in the, what I'm assuming is the edge of pavement, which is the dashed line, if you look at your plan, it's basically on the other side of the road at that point.
Yep. So if you were permitting a half, you're very generous.
My letter did ask the full.
All right, Mr. Clarkin, I think you're seeing writing on the wall here. What do you want to do?
What we'd like to do is to have this application considered. We cannot consent to this condition. If the board imposes it, we will deal with it. But I'd like to move on.
All right, it's, that means your application. Go ahead.
With regard to Item 3.2, we did submit the architectural plans. Perhaps the engineer didn't receive them. We will comply with Item 3.3 with respect to Item 3.4. No trees are being removed. And with respect to Item 3.5, we will comply with that as well as 3.6.
Can I, let's go back to 3.1 for a second.
Sure.
Doesn't it make sense, I mean, listen, obviously, we have an issue here about the, that, that, our engineer feels very strongly about this. The board's echoed that they agree with the engineer. Are we really gonna go through the rest of his application and, and let it go to where it's obviously gonna go? I haven't heard of one good reason why, from your side, other than the fact you don't want to do it. Why Anthony's wrong? Why Anthony's position shouldn't be considered? So why, does this make more sense to, for, for the two of you to work this out? And, and try to convince Anthony that he, that he's mistaken rather than ignoring that point? Because I've heard nothing, other than the fact that you don't want to do it.
Well, the legal argument is that there's not the required nexus, Mark. This is a lightly-traveled street. The impact of this application, one single-family home, is not going to create a large burden upon this roadway. We're dealing with a developer who's gonna build one home. I'm not sure we can do this application if we've got to do edge of pavement for 100-and-some odd feet. I mean, the engineer is looking at it from the intersection of Jersey Avenue. So now we're talking over 200 feet. I'm just trying to balance the interest of the town with the interest of my client. And we, we just, we just don't believe that the road is gonna degrade simply because- we just don't believe that the road is going to degrade simply because it's going to be trenches.
And what if it does? What, what, what if you're wrong and Anthony's right? I mean, I mean, you say, you say, you're not an engineer. You're in a
I didn't say that yet, but I agree, I'm not.
Yeah, I, that's right. So, so you're not an engineer, I'm not an engineer. The only engineer I hear saying that, and I, I don't hear any engineer saying Anthony's wrong.
Well, I have to turn it over to Steve Parker and ask Steve, okay, if he can add to this conversation.
Certainly, there are, you know, there's going to be some, some disturbance out there. I think there's methods that they can use to minimize the, the disturbance by, you know, for example, cutting the cutting the pavement with the saw rather than just, you know, a jackhammer or something like that. When they're done, they, they can even backfill it and there's infrared techniques and methods they can sealing the edges of the trench, but there's not as much disturbance.
Mr. Parker, you're, you're fading, you're fading in and out for some reason.
I'm sorry, I'll start over again.
Thank you.
The, I think what they can do is they can certainly, there's methods, construction methods that they can use that will help to minimize the disturbance out there. They can keep the trenches as narrow as possible. They can saw cut the pavements. When they're done backfilling and paving, they can use, you know, there's a, there's an infrared treatment they can use to seal the edges of the pavement so there's not a an open crack that would get water damaged in it as well. So I think those are some things that can be done, you know, to minimize any impact to, to the public road when they're done with the construction.
So, so, Mr. Clarkin, does it not make sense for Mr. Parker and Anthony to get together and see if, and see if they can come to an agreement on this offline, rather than let this go to where, you know, in inevitable denial based upon the fact that Anthony's adamant that it needs to go one way and the board's not going, I, I don't see the board going in, in the direction of ignoring their own engineer on this point?
There, there's one other alternative, and that is the board can approve the application and impose that condition, even though the applicant did not agree to it. Then the applicant has to decide, do they want to fight the condition in a prerogative writ case or try and work it out? We've done that a lot of times.
Yeah, but I don't know that the board wants to put itself in that position. Because if the negatives of the application, which this would create, and this is, and this is, this is part of the application, I mean, the application would fail. I don't think the board's going to, I mean, I don't want, I, I don't know what the board would or would not do, but I would think the board wouldn't want to approve an application that, that is inevitably going to be handled headed to a lawsuit. If, because they're, because they're clearly are negatives, we can't, you've told us you're not going to do it. So what's the point of approving the application if you're telling us in advance that you're not going to do it?
No, we end up doing it if you impose it. It's just that I can't voluntarily agree to it. My client's sitting here in my office and he's saying he's not going to agree to it voluntarily. You can impose it. That's Mr. Lexton, I, I concur with your assessment 100%. I think why expose the board to potential litigation when it's just as easy to deny the application and walk away from it?
Right.
And if you want, and if the applicant wants to play chicken with us, that's the alternative, we don't blink.
Yeah, I, I, I think the intelligent, I think the intelligent way to go is for Steve Parker and, and Anthony to have a conversation offline and see if they can come to an agreement. Maybe there was an alternative that, I mean, maybe Steve's right, I don't know. But, but maybe he needs time to convince Anthony that he's right, or Anthony, or maybe he won't be able to convince Anthony and he comes back and it's the same answer. But, but to vote on this tonight with this thing hanging out there, doesn't make any sense to me.
Clark? I, I, I think when you have an eight inch water main being extended, you have an eight inch sanitary main that's being proposed, the depth of the water, and albeit a five foot depth for a, a sanitary main, they're going to be destroying that road.
Anthony, how deep is the existing sewer lateral that they're going to be tying into?
The rip is at 100 feet, which is a benchmark, so I'm assuming, and maybe it assumes. And then the invert's 95, so you're talking about five feet. It gets as shallow as two feet up by the original manhole, Tom.
Thank you.
I mean, Mr. Clarkin, look, you can continue if you want. I mean, I've given you my recommendation. Is, is that, is that, is that we carry this? And, and let, and let Steve Parker and Anthony try to talk offline and see if they can come to a consensus? Because Steve, it sounds like Steve Parker has some, has some ideas that maybe if he explores with Anthony would satisfy Anthony, I don't know. But it, it sounds like the two of them should really talk rather than, you know, just head this off to a denial because that's where it's headed.
Okay, Mark, can you give me about 30 seconds with my client?
Sure.
Hey, the zoning board can have a theme song also to play.
Can I ask Anthony a question while we're waiting?
No, wait, wait until, I know we're, we're also, we're still being recorded, but wait until Mr. Clarkin is back.
All right.
Just so the board's aware.
Anthony, let's not, let's not, I don't want to discuss the application of Mr. Parker in here.
Okay.
All right, my client is not willing to accept the condition. What we'd like to do is to call Mr. Higgins so that we can complete the application.
So you don't even want to try having the two talk?
Let's complete the application.
All right, then, 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 then we'll complete the application. Because I don't know, I mean, Mr. Parker, that might not even be a condition if Mr. Parker and Anthony were able to come to a consensus, but you're not, you're unwilling to even have that conversation. So, I mean, I know it's not you, I know it's not you, it's your client, not you, I understand that.
Okay, all right.
All right, that's fine.
So just, you know, my client is, is trying to get a hold of someone who's going to give him a cost estimate. And hopefully that'll happen while we're hearing Mr. Higgins' testimony.
I, yeah, but, but as I just said, at the same time, this condition might not even be necessary if Mr. Parker and Anthony could figure it out. So your client is, is making a decision based upon information that might not be accurate, but
I understand, but I guess he's investigating the worst case scenario, as that.
Okay, fair enough.
All right, can we call Mr. Jim Higgins?
You may. Mr. Higgins, you, you have to unmute yourself. Hi, Mr. Higgins, do you swear any testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the true self you got?
I do.
And Mr. Higgins, you are still a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
That's correct, I have license, I've been licensed for approximately 40 years.
We know, we, we will accept you as an expert. And we know you actually did testify, I'll note for the board, on this application back in 2012, the 2012 version. So
That's correct.
Okay, so, and I'll ask that, do you, do you have any interest in this application other than the fact, other than the professionalism that you're earning this evening?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Jim, what is your understanding of the application?
My understanding is that it's an application to construct a single family residence on an undersized lot. The plot is 4,324 square feet in area where the zone requires 6,000 square feet. And also the depth of the lot, 90 feet is required, and the depth of the lot is 70 feet, point two, 70.29 feet. Both of those are existing conditions which cannot reasonably be changed because of the circumstances surrounding the lot. And there are also variances requested for side yard setback, eight feet is required, six feet is proposed on each side. And for minimum maximum lot coverage, 25% is permitted and 26.6% is proposed.
Can you justify the variances that are being requested today?
Yes, I can. With regard to the lot area and lot depth variances, again, they're existing conditions. They're not impacted by the proposed construction and they're not, they cannot reasonably be avoided. Consequently, in my opinion, there is a hardship due to the size of the lot that would, would be, would prevent the development of a lot if the variances for those two conditions were not granted. The lot would have to remain vacant, the applicant couldn't utilize the property. When you look at the area, there are a number of lots in the area that are undersized that are developed. So I think what's being proposed here is consistent with what's in the immediate area of the site. I don't see any significant negative impact of granting of those variances. With regard to the variances for lot, for side yard setback and building coverage, again, I think they fall under the C2 criteria. Where the benefits of granting of the variance is substantially outweigh the detriments. I think there's also an element of hardship with each of those two because you have a lot that's significantly undersized with regard to width. So that will be normal, what's normally done in a situation like that is to relax the side yard benefit, the side yard setback so that you can have a little bit better shaped house rather than having a house that's too narrow. In this instance, too, by allowing for the six foot side yard setback rather than eight feet, it allows the house not to be as deep and allows for a more usable rear yard, which I think is, is definitely a benefit in terms of the, the use and enjoyment of the properties, whoever might purchase this home in the future. With regard to the variance for building coverage, a conforming lot in this zone would permit a house of 1,500 square foot coverage. What's being proposed here is a house of a little over 1,000 square foot of coverage, which is about two thirds of what the ordinance would permit on a conforming lot. So this isn't a situation where the applicant is trying to construct a house that's completely out of character with the area or not fitting on the lot itself. The 1.5, 1.6% increase is, really would not be noticeable unless somebody went out and actually measured the house. There are other lots in the area that are similar to what's being proposed on this lot. You have block 163, lots six, seven, and eight have set, side yard setbacks that are six feet or less. Block 164, lots 3.01 and five also have side yard setbacks that are less than six, that are six feet or less. And block 166, lots five and eight also have smaller side yard setbacks. So when I see what's being proposed here, I don't think there's any significant detriment to the surrounding area. I think it makes sense because you have a lot that is undersized to, to grant some relief in terms of the side yard setbacks and the building coverages. I think the application does advance some of the purposes of the land use law with regard to encouraging municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The MLUL requires that zoning give reasonable consideration to the character of an area when, when the zone is developed. And actually, what's being proposed here is a development that does give reasonable consideration to the character of the area. Also to encourage the appropriate and efficient expenditure of public funds. Again, the five foot road widening easement that's proposed will eliminate the, the fact that the town, the township would have to acquire that to get the road wide widening. So there would definitely be a benefit to the township in that regard. To provide a sufficient pace and sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses, including residential uses. Again, the proposed development is consistent with the character of the surrounding area. And therefore, it isn't an appropriate location for what's being proposed. And again, I think that in terms of the more efficient use of the land by, by first of all, allowing the property to be developed when it wouldn't otherwise be able to be developed without the granting of variances. And the, the minor variances that are requested for side yard setback and for building coverage will allow for the better use of the property, particularly the side yard setback that allows for a more usable rear yard and a more efficient use of the property. So when I look at this, I do think that there are positive reasons for granting the variances. I don't think there's any substantial negative impact, and I do think that the benefits of the granting of the variances substantially outweigh any detriment.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I do have a question for Mr. Higgins. Um, couldn't we? I, I'm not understanding why it's necessary to have the maximum coverage variance here. It's 25% is the limit and they're going, what are they going? They're going 26.1? But why couldn't, why do we need that variance? Can't they reduce the size of this house? And make it, and, and come within compliance? It doesn't seem like it's that much.
That could be done. But however, when you look at the issue, particularly when it's regard to hardship, that the, the but the law is that, that the hardship doesn't mean the property can't be used, but that the property couldn't be used in a manner that's consistent with what would otherwise be permitted in the zone. And if you had a fully conforming lot, you could have a, a house with a 1,500 square foot footprint. What's being proposed here is a house that's much smaller than that, but that is in character with the surrounding area of the site. So it's not a matter of what could or couldn't be done, it's a matter of what's more appropriate. And in my opinion, having a house that's much more in character with the surrounding houses rather than shrink the house down to be 25% is, I think it's a more appropriate approach. And I don't
How much, how much more, I'm sorry?
I, I just don't think it's a significant increase over that 25% that would have any substantial negative impact on the surrounding area, but it does allow a little bit more room in the house, makes the house more livable.
So, but we're acknowledging that that's the, that's the applicant's choice to make it, to create that variance, however, because there's nothing stopping him from having a completely livable house at 25%.
That, that is a circumstance that occurs with almost every single variance of this nature.
I, I, I appreciate that, but, but we acknowledge the fact that the applicant could reduce the size of the house and eliminate that variance altogether.
He could reduce the size of the house and eliminate the variance, and then the, the usability of the house, the viability of the house would be that much less. As it is, it's a very small house when it's, you consider what it's otherwise permitted in the zone.
I got a quick question. But, Mr. Higgins, did, did you? What, you had originally, I, someone originally said the house would be 48 by 24, right?
That's correct, that's, that's the difference to the house.
Okay, I, I I might have heard you say 1,000 feet in your testimony, but I wasn't sure. So I, I just want to make sure, so it's, it, it is 1152 square feet for the actual house itself, correct?
Say it again?
1152 is the square footage?
Um, the figure that I had was 1,000, I think 1,060. And maybe because it's a regular, I, I don't think the house is a box. I think the 24 by 48 is the overall box that it fits within, but I think it's
No, that's, that's, that's not accurate, it is 1,152 square feet.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
It is a rectangular house.
Okay. Um, and then I think to, to Mark's point, it was just a matter of, I know in the past, we, we, as a board, we've usually recommended that if it's an undersized lot, you still try to keep the 25% as a ratio. So if you have, you know, 43, 24 is your square footage, it would end up being, you know, 1,081 would be the basically the 25%.
Um, is the deck in the back part of the square footage?
No. Decks are usually are included, Tom.
Excuse me?
No, it's not.
Mark, there's a question from Bradley Davis. He's, he's IMing, he needs, wants some explanations as to usability?
Yeah, we should, when, when we're done with Mr. Higgins, when the board's done with Mr. Higgins, Mr. Chairman, you should open it to the public and, and let Mr. Davis ask his questions.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our direct case. I'll appreciate the opportunity to sum up after we hear the board's comments and those of the public. I can tell you that I've had another conversation with my client with respect to the road. And we would agree to Mark's suggestion that the two engineers discuss Steve Parker's suggestion. But that is a backup, if, if that doesn't work out, that the applicant would agree to pave one half of the roadway from the point where the existing water main ends now and from the point where the existing water main ends now and where it's capped up to where the end of the extension of the water line is. So I wanted the board to be aware of that at this point in time.
All right. So, I mean, that's, that was that, that was not what Anthony's suggestion was, correct? He wanted the half width, you're just saying half the road.
No, I'm saying half width.
Oh, half width. You'll do exactly what Anthony was proposing if they can't make an agreement.
Right.
But the problem is, is that if they're looking at the site plan, it looks like that the sewer is right in the middle of the street, which is going to put you more than half width.
And Anthony asked from New Jersey, from Jersey Avenue versus what the applicant is proposing from the terminus of the existing water main.
Yeah, Mr. Brenner, in the meantime, since I have looked at the plan, actually, I did notice that the water mine, the water main is actually capped pretty much right where the existing sanitary manhole is. So I would be agreeable to move it back to the PC basically, where the water and the sewer basically, where the water was capped and where the sewer manhole is now, the existing sewer manhole is now.
So Anthony, are we, are we okay? Are you still offering the half width paved that they just accepted?
So what I was gonna try to bring up to the board, when I think Mr. Clarkson was talking to his client, was that really, at its furthest width of that road, you're talking 19 to 20 feet. So I think you'd be probably, and with two eight inch beams going in, you're gonna probably end up having a pretty substantial disturbance of the roadway from the main to the sewer, from the sanitary main to the water, to the water main. So being that they could probably split the difference where the trenches, the two trenches would be. If they go two feet on the side of the water main, they go two feet on the side of the sewer main, that would probably be about 10 feet, which is a half width of the road. It may not be from center line over, but it would be about a 10 foot width of mill and pave. That would encompass both trenches. I think that would be fair.
And that would be acceptable to the applicant.
All right. So the condition, if the board approves this, will be a half width paved, what we're talking about. And I'll put in the caveat, unless another solution can be worked out between the, between the two engineers. Is that fair? Everyone's on the same page?
I am.
Okay. So the applicant's accepting that, and Anthony, you're accepting that, correct? We're in agreement.
Well, so I would actually prefer it be a 10 foot. And then this way, I can actually, during construction, my field guy or myself can meet with their contractor and we can, we can kind of come up with the 10 foot limits of where best to put it in terms of where the trenches end up being. And this way, we can kind of line it up because the thought is that you may not have to disturb to the extent of the sanitary on the one side. You would, you know, be able to preserve, preserve some road there. You'd be able to preserve some road on the other edge of pavement by the water main. And you would, and we really just work out where we're putting a 10 foot. So maybe instead of that, because right now, at its furthest width, at its widest point, it's a 10 foot, it's a 10, it's a 20 foot road. So I think I'd be more comfortable with a 10 foot mill and pave. And then we can determine it in the field if the board chooses to approve it.
10 foot.
I'm sorry, Mr. Clark, and that's okay with you?
That is acceptable to the applicant.
All right. So 10 foot mill and pave to be worked out between the parties, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Correct.
Between the engineers, okay. Between engineers. Okay. All right. See, that's always good when we sit here and we actually hash this stuff out. So, okay.
I have two questions.
Go ahead, George.
Okay. Anthony, you're talking about this 12 inch cover of the sewer line, that's in the roadway?
It would be for the sewer.
You're sure that's enough to, for a truck or garbage trucks driving over that to carry?
So you have, so I think what Mr. Parker was suggesting is the DIP because it has, it has a bigger, you know, HS20 loading ability. But in term, from our perspective, as far as the material of the pipe itself, DIP usually never lasts for a sanitary. So I think we could probably, that they could probably use the SDR 35, which has a pretty decent load for it. As long as they have a 12, as long as they have a minimum of 12 inch cover. I just, I, my only concern, and I just kind of thought about it tonight, to be, to be honest, is you know, with a single family connecting from, to that, I just don't know if a freezing thaw, that shallow is gonna, is gonna work.
Where's gonna, you got enough water running to drain?
Well, that's why the 1% was a big issue as part of the comment also. It had to be a minimum of 1%.
Now, what about coming out of the house to there? You got enough pitch out of the house to the main?
Well, I think that's where the ejector pump may have to come into play if they have to do it.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant's okay with the ejector pump?
Just out of curiosity, going back to the original approval, what was done about this main back then? Was there any wording on that in the original approval that ran out?
None that I saw, sir.
Yeah, and I'll agree with Mr. Clark on that. This, we really did not really talk about it. Now, I do not know what was in Tim Gillan's review letter at the time. This may have been discussed in there and they may have just agreed to whatever was in Tim Gillan's letter. If it wasn't an issue, I wouldn't have been drawn out in the, in the resolution for any reason because they agreed to what was in the letter. So I can't answer your question, George.
What if they put a concrete cover over this pipe, Anthony?
They can do that. I'm not, I'm not particularly a big fan of it though, because if anything ever happens to it, the, the main basically becomes a, in this particular case, it's public works.
It's hard, the town said they could get.
It is, it's the town's, it would be the town's main at that point.
Yeah, my suggestion on that point, George, is still what I said before, that that particular point be left to the engineers to work out and just make sure that Anthony's satisfied with whatever they're proposing. And because that was point 2.1, right, that you're back to referring to? Yeah. So, so, so I, I mean, that's my suggestion, that you just let them work that out together and figure it out.
All right.
All right, Mr., if there are no other questions, Lyle, do you want to open up to the public?
Yes. If there's anybody in the public who has any questions for the applicant, is that experts or the board, please let, raise your hand, let us know, and Paul will unmute you.
I think Mr. Davis obviously wants to talk.
Paul, can you unmute Mr. Davis, please? Okay, Mr. Davis.
He's still muted.
I am myself. Thank you.
Okay, you have to swear him in, right?
Yeah, Mr. Davis, I'm gonna swear you in. Can you raise your right hand? I can't see you, so I'm gonna assume you actually are doing it. Your swearing testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y God.
I do.
And just state your name for the record, spelling your last name.
Bradley Davis, D-A-B-I-S.
And your address?
Is 82 Cliffwood Avenue, Unit E33, Cliff, New Jersey.
I'm sorry, 82 Cliffwood Ave, Unit what?
E33.
E is in Edward?
Correct.
33 in Avenue. What?
That's Cliffwood Avenue, Cliffwood, New Jersey.
Cliffwood, New Jersey. Okay, gotcha. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I am the condo directly behind where the proposed site is going to be built.
Okay.
How, when Jim Higgins talked about usability of the home and the way that it would be enjoyed, making it larger than the proposed lot size should be, is he actually referring to the amount of money that the applicant can receive from selling this home? Because what is the real purpose of actually getting a bigger home than a lot size can really bear? And I have another follow-up question regarding.
Well, yeah, let him answer your first question.
First of all, now, my testimony has nothing at all to do with the value of the home, what it can be sold for. My testimony deals with the fact that by having a slightly larger home than would be permitted in terms of the percent coverage that the ordinance would permit. It allows there to be a little bit more room inside the house. Each of the rooms could be a little bit larger and therefore more comfortable and more usable. And the fact that the house that's being proposed is really two, about, I would say 75% of the size that would be permitted if this was a conforming lot, which would be 1,500 square feet, it's about 1,150 square feet is being proposed. And that is only 70 square feet more than what would be permitted by the ordinance at the 25%. So it's not that big a difference yet. It allows additional room inside the house for the, for the occupants to have a little bit more enjoyment of the house. It's use and enjoyment, it's not value. And I really don't know if by having that extra 70 square feet would increase the value of the home or not.
Understood. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Now, with regards to the deck, this will be how many feet back into the backyard? In addition to the back?
I did not look at the deck in terms of variances because there are no variances associated with the deck.
Okay, because our fence line is going to be buttered up right against that deck line. And that's going to decrease the enjoyment of our home.
That's not the case if you look at the plan, sir.
Yeah.
We did look at the plan. I also went out today and took pictures of the lane that you're proposing to build on, Mr. James. And it is not cleared property and there is no tree line behind where your proposed line is that's drawn out in your plans. It's a clear sight directly into our home from your top floor proposed.
Is there no, Mr. Davis, on the plan that we're looking at, it shows it as a wooded area and there's a fence. You're saying that that's not accurate?
That's not accurate.
There's, there's no wooded area?
There is wooded area to the right. My wife is in the background also, if you like to swear her in.
Well, one person at a time, let's, let's use.
Yes, sir. So to the right of the proposed property where he claims that it's cleared, there is wooded area. Because he claimed earlier today, it was not Jim Higgins, it was the, another gentleman claimed that it was already cleared. So how could it be wooded area and cleared? That sounds like a discrepancy in their testimony today. And as I just stated, yes, there is no wooded area along that, along the fence line that adjoins our property.
Is there, is there a PVC fence?
Yes, but not that would cover the sanctity of our home and our daughter's room directly in eyesight of the top floor of their home.
I would just like to point out to the board that the applicant is not seeking a rear yard setback variance. And I think that's the critical point in evaluating Mr. Brazile's objection.
Well, I'd just like to know, I mean, Mr. Parker, can you, can you explain why you're showing wooded area on the plan? If there's, if it's not wooded?
Not behind, directly behind.
That, that would have typically been, you know, probably, I think there's a note on the plan that says those wooded areas that are offsite were generally taken from aerial photographs. So that's, that's where that would have come from and that may just be what it looked like if there's, I don't know if it's lawn back there or what, but even if there's trees or shrubs, there's, it would, it would have looked like a wooded area on the aerial photo, or that way.
Do I have a, I have a question about your testimony, sir. You said that you were at the site recently.
No, I didn't say it was there recently. I've been, yes, not recently.
Is there a way that I can share a photo with the board? Is there somebody I can email it to?
Paul, can he email it to you? Can you give your email? I don't know how to, do you want to give your email address or type it in or something?
Yeah, I'll type it to the applicant.
Thank you.
Not to the applicant, but Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis.
This is the chairman. How long have you lived in that, in your current residence?
Is that for me, miss? I've been here for approximately 13 months.
Wow, we can't hear you.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a possibility that that wooded area was, did exist at one point and that the ownership of your apartment complex had removed that?
It's not on our side of the fence. It's on the opposite side of the fence. So there was no way that our ownership could have done that.
Well, according to this, the fence is on, is that, is that the property line? So the wooded area would be on the apartment complex property?
Yeah.
It's possible it used to be there, Mr. Davis. If you've lived there, if you've lived there just over a year, it's very possible it used to be wooded.
When he, when the previous owner purchased the property in 1983 or 1984, I'm sorry, 1988, my wife corrected me, there was wooded area to the back left of our property, not directly behind.
Okay. All right. The only thing, Mr. Davis, you gotta understand, and I'm not saying the board's gonna approve this or not approve this, you know, you're not, you're buying, when you, when you buy a piece of property and there's another piece of property behind you, you have to anticipate some is going to be built on that property eventually. And even if there were no variances for this, I mean, they're always gonna have the lot variances which they can't do away with. I mean, that's a hardship. But some is gonna be building that house one day and there's nothing that prohibits them from building a two-story dwelling. You're not entitled to a clear view out and you just have to keep that in mind.
I understand and respect that. I want to make one more comment about the Street of Monica in Jersey are lightly traveled. We have lived here for, like you said, 13 months and that street is actually quite heavily traveled by both delivery trucks, vehicles, and also as someone also stated, heavy trucks and garbage trucks. So to say that that's a lightly traveled street is an understatement.
Okay, but, but again, the, the traffic on the street has nothing to do with the,
It has to do with.
Going to build a house on the street.
We do agree there, but it does go to the point of the depth of the sewer main and also the water lines to be above the freeze line.
Understood. And they've agreed with our engineer now as to what they're gonna do, so that issue's sort of been eliminated.
Hey, Mr. The Chairman again, just to, just to reiterate what Mr. Higgins had said. If they were to build a conforming house on that, on that lot, the house would still be just as tall and they would still be able to see back to your property. So if they, if they were to, to withdraw this application and build a conforming house, you would still have the same situation.
Yeah, that was my point, Mr. Chairman, exactly.
I understand that point. Is the deck included in the lot coverage?
No, it's not.
And why is that not included?
The way the, Anthony, you're probably better to answer that, but I'm assuming it's that the way the ordinance is written, it's not included.
It is the way the ordinance is written. It has to be part of the attached dwelling to be considered part of the, the square footage of it. Even an open porch, for instance, even an open porch, front porch would be included. The only way it would be included is if it was roofed, as if it was enclosed. So a deck is not, a deck is not included as part of that.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I see that some, I know there's another member of the public, Andrew Scibor, who would like to talk, and I apologize if I said the name incorrect. But I don't see him on here. Is that Michelle Velazquez?
Hello?
Oh, there he is. I'm sorry, I didn't see. All right, I'm gonna, again, if you can raise your right hand, I'm gonna trust you that you're actually raising it. Do you swear a testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, self-y God?
Yes, I do.
All right. And Mr. Scibor, can you just state your name and give us, and spell your last name?
Andrew Scibor, S-C-I-B-O-R. Andrew Scibor, S C I B O R.
And your address?
Lot nine and lot eight.
What about your address?
Twenty-six Homestead Drive, Colts Neck.
Homestead Drive and Colts Neck. Colts Neck, but you own.
Yes.
You own lots.
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine, okay. And are there's there anything on those properties?
No, it's wooded land that eventually I'm going to build on.
All right, I'm trying to see where that is in conjunction to this.
It's on the same side of the street, it's a subject property.
Okay, I see them, got it. Go ahead, Mr. Scibor.
Well, prior approvals in two thousand and twelve, these approvals were that he's going to extend the water and sewer to adjacent, you know, down the street farther. So adjacent properties could benefit from this. Now this approval that you're seeking now tonight, that you're stopping the water and sewer up into his lot, and now I'll never be able to, anybody else is not going to be able to benefit from this to build. I mean, the prior approvals in two thousand and twelve state that he was going to extend this sewer pipe farther. So other people could benefit from it, that's why he got the approvals. Now you're speaking that he's just going to stop it and put a pump-up system. I'll never be able to be able to tap to this sewer. What's the sense of putting a sewer pipe that no one else can attach to? I mean, if he's going to do it, you do it right or don't do it. And let the next person that is going to do it on this lot will do it the right way.
Mr. Scibor, this is this.
Go ahead.
This is the chairman. Do you plan on building out there? I mean, not today.
The question.
Not today, but eventually in the next two, three years, four years or ten years from now.
All right, Mr. Scibor, where do you see in the two thousand and twelve approval that they were going to do is I'm not saying you're wrong, I just I'm not seeing that.
Well, I got a letter, I mean, an email from Maxine that he was going to have the water and sewer prior in two thousand and twelve was going to be to the to benefit everybody else on that street. That's why they gave him the approval in the first place on that lot. You need to look up those prior approvals then.
Yeah, no, hold on, no, I've got it. It said, and Mr. Clarkin previously said that they're going to agree to all the conditions in the pre in the previous approval. What it says is, at the time, it was Chet Sermont, Charles Sermont testified, and it's number thirteen in the resolution, in the two thousand and twelve resolution. He further noted that one of the reasons he believed the property had sat undeveloped all these years, despite the previous two approvals, is that there is no sanitary sewer or water service on the property. As part of this application, both the water main and sanitary sewer service would be extended. This extension will act as a benefit for other properties that run along the water and sewer mains as they would be given the opportunity to tie into the service as well. So is that not and is that not the case still here?
Well, he was required to have the pipe extended so other people could, you know, attach into it. He's not.
It doesn't it doesn't say that, it does not say that. What it says is both the water main and sanitary sewer service would be extended. The extension will act as a benefit for other properties that run along the water and sewer mains as they would be given the opportunity to tie into that service as well. I mean, is that, am I missing something? Again, I'm not an engineer, is it not possible?
What I'm mixing is.
This is, only one person can talk at a time.
Sorry.
So that's okay. So so are we saying that that's no longer possible? I'm asking, I'll ask our engineer that question. Anthony, is what they're proposing, it'd be impossible for Mr. Scibor's properties to tie into that system?
So currently, Mark, right now, the water main is being extended all the way to the applicant's far property line closest to Andrew's lots eight and nine, basically. So the the water main actually is in fact being extended as far as it 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 could possibly go, sort of encroaching on to someone else's lot. The sanitary basically is stopping at about
where you can't walk in?
Hold on.
Ten feet.
Past his initial property line from Jersey Avenue. I I think what the the prior applicant was probably saying is that I'm extending the water and the sewer to benefit me, but in doing so, I'm also extending the sewer seventy-two feet and I'm extending the water a hundred and twenty feet. So that's a hundred and twenty feet less water that anyone else would have to extend from Jersey Avenue. So I don't know if it was necessarily that he had to extend it, you know, all the way with property lines. It was just the idea that, and again, I don't know, I'm assuming.
No, but Anthony, that's how I read it as well. I don't read it that they're that they're running the line so that everyone else can, you know, access it. Just that they're that they're they're extending the line and other people will be able to tap into that line ultimately. I'm not reading it as the way it's being described by Mr. Scibor.
Yeah, and quite and quite and quite honestly, I don't think the sanitary, to be perfectly honest, could be.
They can go no further.
I mean, they're basically essentially, which is one of the, you know, kind of the agreement and the discussion we had earlier, is that they're button up against the cover of the pipe now. So to try to extend it any further, you'd be out of the road, you'd be above ground.
So how am I going to hook up to this sewer in the future?
You wouldn't be able to, you would never be able to.
Then I think we have a problem. I mean, this has to be worked out so I could hook up to it in the future. So right now, no one's really going to benefit adjacent properties to this pipe. So he ain't helping anybody else on the property, so he's just helping himself.
He's not obligated to assist anyone else.
Okay.
With all due respect.
No, and I and I would concur with Mr. Clarkin on that, that they have no affirmative obligation to create. If they were doing something to the sewer system by creating the property that made it impossible for you to connect, that would be one thing. But they don't have an affirmative obligation to create a situation in which you can connect into.
Okay, so but prior approvals were that we could benefit everybody else along on the street. We can't benefit from this now, that's why.
Yeah, but I I think I think you're misreading what the two thousand and twelve resolutions actually meant as being as 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 them doing more than what they were actually going to do, as Anthony just said.
Okay, there's a lot, lot number ten, next to it, a small little lot. What is the the person bought a lot next to it so he has a conforming lot?
Well, he can't he can't buy the lot next to him unless the owner of that lot wants to sell to him. And Mr. Clarkin's testified, not testified, Mr. Clarkin's represented that he contacted that lot owner and has not heard back from them.
Well, that is correct. He needs to knock on his door, I mean, he needs.
Well, yeah, but that's not, that's great, but that's not the rule. He attempted to reach out to them, he's not received any response.
Okay, I I just feel if no one else could benefit from this sewer pipe, I mean, like in the future, I'm going to have a problem running the sewer, okay? I'm going to have to do a lateral with a pump-up going down there. I mean, it's just more work, I have to rip up the road again that he just paved. I mean, if he can't.
Well, let me ask you, Mr. Scibor, let me ask you this question. If this if this if this application goes down and no one builds on this property, they don't extend the sewer and no one develops it, what does that mean for your lots? That you're just never going to develop your lots because because you can't access this sewer? And you're just going to sit around and wait for someone to develop what what is their lot?
No, eventually I'll probably buy him out and then I'll do it the right way.
Well, again, that's not that's not the standard and and the board can't deny its application based upon based upon that they have no affirmative obligation to create a situation that benefits you through the sewer system. Again, if they were doing something that specifically was making it a negative for you, that would be something different, but that's not what they're doing.
They're not making it a positive for anybody else on the.
But that's not, they're not required to do that.
Better supply getting the water closer to you.
Right. And that's exactly what the two thousand and twelve resolution was saying.
There's a code that he's supposed to follow. He needs six thousand square feet of property to build a house on. He's at four thousand three hundred and twenty-four square feet. I mean, he's overbuilding on the house by, you know, he's a much larger house than he originally proposed. I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, let's do what's right for the neighborhood over there. I mean.
Why haven't you bought lot, bought ten?
Why haven't I? Lot, because I'm not ready to develop it. I mean, I'm developing other budgets.
But eventually you will buy and you'll buy them out, is.
If I could buy lot ten, I will buy lot ten.
All right, but for now, again, I'm instructing the board that what you're so you're suggesting is not the board cannot deny the application based upon the concept that they're not making an improvement to the sewer system that benefits you. That they they the board can't deny the application for that reason.
I understand, but not just me, everybody else, you got lot number.
It doesn't matter, they don't have to benefit anyone by by improving the sewer system.
Mr. Scibor. But, Mark, can you hold on, Mr. Scibor, this is the chairman. My question to you is, which lot do you have, lot nine?
Lot nine and eight.
Lot nine and eight, is lot nine currently large enough to build a house the same as the applicant's building right now without without requirement, requiring any variances?
Yes.
It is.
Lot lot eight and nine, I would put together and I would have more than enough square footage to build a house.
Okay, but currently lot nine is not big enough to build a house the same size as the applicant's at this time.
I don't know the exact size, but I would, when I bought the lot, it was told that I would have to put the two lots together. And I bought it from you guys in the town. I'm just saying, like, you know, in the future, when I have to build this, I'm going to have to like look around these all these sewer pipes. To try to get a forced main down to the main, I mean, like.
You're gonna have to do that anyway, because you don't have the pitch.
What are you guys are gonna approve?
Mr. Scibor.
You're gonna approve a sewer pipe, I'm sorry, let me let me speak. If you're gonna approve a sewer pipe, prove a sewer pipe that we all could hook up to. Not a forced main.
It's not the applicant's obligation, once again.
Okay, then he needs to build a house to a conforming lot then.
So so.
Mr. Scibor, it's it sounds like you have it one way that or another, and it sounds a little argumentative to me.
No, I'm just saying, like, you know, it's just, I don't think it's fair that he can put a sewer pipe in that we can't hook up to. I mean.
But from what I understand, the way you're saying this, if he were to extend the sewer piping further, then you wouldn't have any problem with this.
I wouldn't have a problem, everybody else wouldn't have a problem with it on the street.
There's nobody else on the street that wants a free sewer line.
I mean, you have a lot right across the street, or lot number one sixty-three. I mean, it's an empty lot, no one can build on there unless the sewer pipe is hooked up. I mean, if you want to develop it and get more taxes for the for Aberdeen, I mean, the pipes should get extended and we all go hook up to it. And then these lots will get developed and you will increase your tax revenue for the town.
Mr. Scibor, are you willing, are you willing to throw in money for this for this pipe extension?
Sure.
You are?
Yes.
Isn't there an elevation problem?
I'd say there is.
There is.
Same elevation problem there was in two thousand and twelve.
Just like Anthony said, the engineer, you extend that pipe further, it's going to be sticking out, sticking out of the road. So I don't know if it's the town required to put a pump in to bring it lower. Or if this gentleman here, Andrew, would he be required to absorb that expense? But that's not even the case.
We're here for the other application.
Mr. Chairman, I think we've gotten far afield. I'd like to concentrate on the application.
Okay, if you want to proceed, if you have any more evidence.
As I indicated before, we've concluded our direct case. I'd like to give a short summation if I can.
Anyone else from the public, Mr. Chairman?
Michelle, that the last question, who had a question, but I'm not sure it pertains to this application. And I don't see her online anymore.
Yeah, I don't see her anymore.
Yeah, all right.
I'm here, but I'm under Damian's statement because my phone disconnected.
Did you did you want to comment on this application?
Well, we received a letter, I'm not sure if this is the correct meeting for the lot next to our property. And that was the question that I had.
What's your what's your property?
The the lot in question is eight eight five Brookside Avenue, Keyport.
No, no, it's definitely not, definitely not this application. I'm trying to find my agenda, let's see. I don't even I don't even see that on here.
It says block three fifty, lot four.
Is it is it in Keyport?
Well, we're Cliffwood Beach, but the address reads Keyport.
Okay, and what was the name of the applicant?
The letter that we received was from an attorney's office, Dante M. Alfieri.
Alfieri and Maxine, do you have any idea what application that she might be talking about?
Hold on. Lot four, she's saying. It sounds more like she's in Keyport, Cliffwood Beach.
And you don't have any name.
She said notice, Damian?
Yes.
How did you hear about the meeting?
He just sent us a letter and asked us if we would be if we would be present for the meeting, but there was no date for the meeting. So that's why we zoomed in.
And it said it was the Aberdeen zoning board?
Yes.
Okay, and because there's nothing, there's nothing even, and it doesn't, it doesn't list an applicant's name other than Sal Berry's name. Usually there's the name of an applicant on the letter.
No.
I don't have that name on the two hundred foot list.
Yeah, and I don't know what it is. Are you able to, and again, we can come, Michelle, are you, it was Michelle, right?
Yes.
Are you able to email, do you have it scanned in or anything?
No, but I can scan it.
All right, I'm going to give you my, I'm going to text you my email address. If you could, if you could email me the letter, I would appreciate it. And then we'll try to figure out, you know, what it was and what it's related to, but it definitely has nothing to do with tonight.
Okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so I'm going to chat you right now. And again, Mr. Clark and I apologize, but let me just do this.
No problem.
Thank you.
Okay, I just I just texted over my email address, so she has it and and we'll get back to, we'll get back to her. So, all right, Mr. Clark, can go ahead.
Thank you very much. And, Mr. Chairman, board members, I believe that the testimony that you've received this evening from Mr. Higgins certainly meets both the positive and the negative criteria for the granting of all the variances. I believe, and Mr. Lexton can instruct you, that the Dowmeyer case is the one that controls and it encourages boards to approve undersized lot cases where feasible. The conclusions that you reached in two thousand and twelve can be repeated again today. There's been no change in the zoning for this property. With regard to the coverage variance, not only did you approve it before, but it's a modest over coverage, but more importantly, it would allow this house to be consistent with the land development pattern and sizes of other homes in the neighborhood. With regard to the objectors, I'd like you to, with respect to Mr. Davis's objection, please keep in mind what I think is a critical fact, and that is that the applicant is not requesting a rear yard setback variance. In addition, if you look at the plot plan and you look at the location of the condominium units to the rear, you're going to see there's a distance of at least fifty feet to the common rear yard line of the applicant's property. And there are trees that would help provide some buffering. With regard to the second objector, I think that you have the guidance from your attorney that this applicant has no obligation to extend the sewer and water lines to benefit other properties. We are making substantial extensions, and this will certainly put other property owners, including that objector, in a better position than if this application was not ever brought. And I thank you for your attention and request that the. And I thank you for your attention and request that the application be approved.
Mr. Clarkin, I did just, and again, I don't think the application should be based upon this or not, but if I can make a suggestion to your client, he may want to talk to Mr. Schreiber. And being that he is a neighboring property, who's in the owner, who's indicated he's willing to contribute to the extension of the sewer line, and maybe something can be done. Again, I'm not, it has nothing to do with this application, but it may make sense to just do that.
Just for the record, Mark, there had been discussions between that gentleman and my client in the past, so they do know each other. And I will ask my client if he would like to continue those discussions and we'll see if it goes anywhere.
Okay, thanks.
Hello, I never spoke to your client about, nothing about, anything about this water and sewer or buying my, I mean, I never even spoke to him about anything in the past. But I would like to speak to him if he, you know, wishes out to me or I could reach out to him regarding if he does get the approval about the sewers, so this way I'm not jammed up over there, you know?
It might have been, it might have been a different owner, Mr. Chairman, but bottom line is, we certainly know how to get ahold of this gentleman.
Okay, yeah, I think, I think everyone would appreciate that because it can be a benefit for all on that front, even though it has nothing to do with the application itself, that would definitely be great. Wow, we can't hear you.
Hear me?
Yeah.
How about now?
Now we can.
Thank you. With that, I think we've covered all concerns. Give it one more go around if there's anything that needs to be discussed. I'd like to hear from the board. If not, then may I get a motion to either accept or.
Hey, Mark, could you just clarify or repeat what the two engineers are going to discuss?
Sure. We left, the main thing they're going to discuss is that the paving, well, the paving of the street, it's going to be 10 feet and they're going to agree where that 10 feet is going to be, but it's definitely going to be 10 feet of milling and paving. Unless they can come to some other agreement or something. The applicant has 100% agreed to do 10 feet. And then the other item was item 2.1 in Anthony's letter. They're going to, the applicant's going to have to convince Anthony of what materials they're going to use for the sanitary main. That's point 2.1. Because Anthony has made his suggestion and they're going to have to meet his, his approval, and I think the applicants agreed to do so.
Correct.
Mark, these will be, these will be conditions?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Tom, does that answer everything?
Yeah, just one more. It says here that this actual application, it came in front of the board like five times and been reaffirmed?
It was last before the board in 2012. And I also, and the board approved it, but there was a condition in it that it expired after one year.
Okay.
So that's why, that's really the only reason that they're back. And Mr. Clarkin, on that point, I should go over with you, just to make sure we're all on the same page here. You indicated at the beginning of the call, at the beginning of the call, at the beginning of the application, that you've agreed to the five-foot right-of-way easement, correct?
Yes.
You've agreed to entering into a developer's agreement?
Yes.
And you've agreed, and which will, you know, I'm sorry, and that says, which shall include requirement if future individuals make a reimbursement for sewers extensions. So that's going to be in there?
Yes.
Okay, so to the applicant making the $900 contribution to the township sidewalk fund?
Yes.
All right, and those were all the conditions of note here. And I didn't notice, is there a basement proposed with this application?
No basement.
All right, so I will, I'll note that there is no basement. We don't even need that condition then.
Mark. Can the, can the condition with respect to building within one year be enlarged, especially in this time of COVID?
Well, you got the, I mean, we're in the COVID extension.
Extension period, I know.
Yeah, we, we don't, we don't like extending the one year. I mean, you're automatically protected by the, by the, what you call it, the Department Extension Act that's in effect right now, so. But no, I've not seen this forward, extend that one year at all.
All right.
Mark.
Mr. Sinclair, you have a question?
Yes, indeed, I have a question. Going through the records, from what I've found, in November of 2014, the applicant entered into a development agreement with the township on this property and it never went forward.
So. Yeah, I don't understand your point, Mr. Sinclair.
Well, he's had six years to develop the property.
But it wasn't, it wasn't him.
Yes, it was. Niko Developers LLC, having address of 129 McKinley Street, South Plainfield, New Jersey.
Yeah, but they didn't, yeah, but they did not have any approvals to do anything at that time.
Yes, they did.
Where?
It embodied the agreements of 2012.
And 2014?
In 2014, yes.
Yeah, but the, but the use, but, but, but the approval was, the approval was, was null and void in 2013.
Correct.
Then, then why would the township enter into a development agreement with the developer in 2014 that's filed with the county?
And I can't answer that question. I mean, the approval was null and void in 2014, in 2013. So they, so they entered into a developers' agreement in 2014. I can't answer why the township would do that because the approval was null and void on its face.
Did they come back for an extension?
No.
I think what happened, and it was before my time, I don't think anybody realized when they were discussing the developers' agreement in 2014, that the approval had expired, in all honesty.
That's probably what happened.
Yes, and for the most part, I think this is moot anyway. This is a new application.
That's right. It's a moot point.
Well, I think what Mr. Sinclair is pointing out is the fact that there is an intervening six-year period where the application, the applicant didn't move forward at all, and there certainly was ample opportunity. And now to create, to claim a hardship because of COVID, you know, I think it's somewhat frivolous, but.
Yeah, one year.
But we're not going to grant, but we're not going to grant it anyway. We've never granted a waiver of the one year. And I think Mr., I think Mr. Clarkin agreed to that, that he's okay with that.
I withdrew the request.
One last, one last thing?
Sure.
I, based on testimony, I'm kind of confused now about my, my 3.4 comment. I think Mr. Parker said there were no trees to be removed, but then I heard maybe some kind of other testimony that there may be trees in the lot. Can we just at least have the applicant agree that if there are trees in the lot, they'll provide them on the plan and we can, if need be, do a tree replacement plan?
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
I'm looking at a picture. I don't, I don't think there's any trees on the property, but I have no problem. I have no problem with that at all.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, with those stipulations that were articulated by the applicant and agreed to by the town's professionals, I move that the application be granted, subject to all of those articulations.
Thank you very much. Can someone second that motion?
Second.
Mr. Brenner?
Yes.
Mr. Bucko?
Yes.
Mr. Byak?
Yes.
Mr. Falco?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
No, Mr. Phillips.
Mr. Phillips is not here.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes.
Mr. Sinclair?
Abstained.
Stayed.
Okay, with that, the application has been approved?
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, let me just reiterate that the, when, for the Mr. Cyborg, who should probably know this, when a town creates a zoning plan and use plan for property, it has to grant relief to people under that agreement. And so it is fair and appropriate for any property owner to come before a zoning board and ask for relief from the ordinance. Doesn't mean that we have to grant it, but we do have to accept the application if it's well-prepared and listen to the arguments for and against. And in this case, while it may not be Mr. Cyborg's wish that something be built, this board does not have the authority to deny building something on the property. So thank you.
Very well put.
Okay, if I can, to Michelle, the last guest, can we, can we, can you unmute yourself again? I just want to explain. All right, so I reviewed the notice that you received, just so you understand. That is a letter from, from the attorney for the owner of that property. And what he's asking you to do, he has variances that if he wants to develop his property, he would have to come to this board to see. It has not been scheduled before this board yet, and there hasn't even been an application filed yet. What he's asking you is whether you're interested in buying his property or selling him property, which is something he's obligated to do before he can appear here, because when he comes to the board, he's going to say, look, I have, I have, I have variances and I reached out to my neighbors to see if they were willing to sell the property, whether they were interested to buy mine. And they either said yes or they said no. So if you're interested, I'm not giving you legal advice, but if you're interested in pursuing it, I suggest you reach out to Mr. Alfieri directly and find out more details from him. That's the proper place to go. If it does eventually come before the board, you will get an, you will get notices in the mail for it.
Okay.
Okay, does that make sense?
Yes, we live in 885, 881, so 885 is right there.
Right, it's right next door to you.
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, so reach out to Mr. Alfieri and then he'll be able to talk to you more in detail about what's going on and, and then you can make a decision, like I said, whether you want to buy the property or sell him property or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, we reached out to him already. This was the letter after that, and it was another letter that he, he, it's came out with, and then this is like the third letter, so I don't know.
All right, yeah, well, if it is, like I said, if it ever is scheduled for a board hearing, and that's why Maxine doesn't even know about it, because there's no application that's even been submitted. If, if they do, if they do submit an application and they do go before the board, you'll receive a hearing notice telling you exactly when the application is.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
You so much.
No problem. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
No problem.
All right, with that, our next order of business is memorialization of Resolution B 20-100 140 Lower Main Street. And I have a motion to accept the resolution.
Move it.
Take it.
Maxine, who is eligible?
Mr. Brenner, Mr. Bucko, Mr. Byak, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Sinclair.
Oh, didn't Mr. Sinclair vote in the negative on that application?
Oh, okay.
So he's not eligible.
Think I may have also.
No, I think, I thought Mr. Sinclair was the only no vote.
All right. Voice vote?
No, we don't even have to vote. We have the motion to accept it.
I didn't know anybody did, okay.
I made the motion and Tom, Tom seconded it.
I apologize, okay. I'm sorry.
That's all right. All those in favor?
No, you guys, I'll do a roll call.
Who seconded?
Do a roll call, okay.
Tom seconded.
Mr. Bucko.
Who made the motion?
Me.
Mr. Byak.
Mr. Brenner?
Tired.
Yes.
Mr. Bucko?
Absolutely.
Mr. Byak?
Yep, yes.
Okay, with that, that concludes our business. The next meeting is going to be October 28. What time is the meeting again?
6:30.
30.
6:30. So if there's anybody in the audience who is going to, wants to attend the next. It's going to be a long one. All right, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. With that, this meeting is adjourned.